Call this meeting with order?
Yeah.
Join me in the pledge.
The pledge is to the flag of the United States of America and to the Godlike for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Brooks?
Here.
Mr. Brown?
Here.
Mrs. Davis? Mr. DeFrasco?
Here.
Mr. Juret?
Here.
Mr. Gulick?
Here.
Mr. Johnston?
Here.
Mr. Lynch?
Here.
Mr. Gillespie?
Here.
Can I get a motion to approve in a minute?
So move, second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. And... Let's do this.
Thank you. Good evening, welcome to Cambridge Springs Elementary School. For those of you that are visiting, my name is Mrs. Stevens. I have the pleasure of being the principal of this fantastic school in this wonderful community. This evening, we have a couple of guests with us to present and some student recognitions that we'd like to do. We're going to start off with our first graders who are going to be singing "God Bless America." If our first graders want to come up, then we're going to do some student recognitions. We're going to change up the order because we do have a pig. So we're going to do some students that have made it to the state farm show. I'm also going to be recognizing some students wrestlers that have made it to the state level and swimmers. And then a new program that we have here at school for our sixth grade writers. We're going to be highlighting that as well. But we'll be quick and then our students will be leaving. We're going to start out with our first graders. Our first grade students are practicing in preparation to sing an Erie Bay Hops game coming up soon in Portland.
We start each day the same way. We honor our country by standing respectfully.
We say the Pledge of Allegiance.
Then we sing the Stars Paint Blue Banner.
Lastly, we sing and sign God Bless America.
We will go country and our school.
Now we are going to sing one of them for you.
God bless America, land that I love. Stand beside her and guide her through the night with the light from above. From the mountains to the prairies, to the oceans, white as home. God bless America, my home sweet home.
At Cambridge Springs Elementary School, we house a classroom for the deaf and hard of hearing for the entire county. So students come from as far away as Union City to come to school here to be part of that deaf and hard of hearing classroom. So the signing of it is just a perfect touch. Thank you so much, first grade. Okay, next up, down in the library are students, our board members that met previously. They had done some coding of robots and they're on display down in the library. I would also ask you to go ahead and check out our display case on your way out. There are, Mr. Dutchkatt happens to be here with us because he's also a dad of a first grader. But they've been doing tremendous things with 3D printing and some of those are out on display. But I'm going to go ahead and introduce... We wanted to recognize students who go above and beyond, not just in the classroom. So the Webster family. We have Owen, Adriana, Lena Webster, and they have made it, they've done a ton of showing of their pig and they made it to the state farm level, so I'm going to let them... Are they good right here? We're good right here. I say the pig does wherever the pig wants to go. Here's a book from their park. Do you want to take the book and carry it back? I'm originally from New York City. I started at Pencrest School District over 23 years ago. And I was just telling the Websters, I got a job here late in August. I was thrilled to get hired at Pencrest School District. It was like, alright, I'll move, I'll get going, for Pencrest I will get there. So I moved eight hours away and it was the week of the fair. It was the first time I'd ever seen a pig like that or a cow like that up close. So I have, Pencrest has brought me a long way. The Cambridge community has welcomed me and I have learned more than some of my students, I believe.
So hi, my name is Lena Webster and that is my sister Adriana Webster. We're going to tell you about our life raising and showing pigs. We brought two pigs that we barreled on our farm and we both started at four and five years old. Our mom showed pigs at the Crawford County Fair when she was growing up. We met a family that's very successful and I did show pigs at the fair and they taught us a lot about picking good pigs. We started going to jackpot shows with them and have continued to get better every year. It is a lot of work. We got, we get the pigs about 40 to 50 pounds. We started with bonding with them. After they trust us, we started breaking them to walk with. We use treats like marshmallow bark and cookies. We practice every day. We wash them every day also. Skin and hair is very important in a show. I was champion overall at the 2020 farm show and AJ was champion in York. That's the champion in York of a purebred pig. My pig was a bronze. The shows we go to are all winter and summer, teach us a lot. We learn what different feeds to feed our pigs. They all eat differently like humans. Some need fat because they have sticky belly and some eat... Some feed that won't make them fat because they have a bitty belly. It's all different science in mixing different feeds for the pigs. Sometimes we need to give them shots if they are talking or sick. So we learn a lot about medication and vaccinations. There is so much to learn about pigs. We learn new things every day. All pigs are different. I couldn't imagine our life without them. Does anyone have any questions?
We're trying to be more mindful of things that students do beyond the school day and work them into our curriculum in all ways that we're able to. It really is amazing when you think about these young girls getting up in front of a whole arena at a state farm show and speaking and presenting and showing and everything that they're learning. We're just really, really proud of their accomplishments. I'm also very excited because Dr. Glasspool and the school board have worked with us in the last year and a half because attendance sometimes was an issue. And we've worked some things out that have really helped families who are excelling at that area be able to do educational days in that way. So thank you so much. I'm not sure how long they'll want to stay with us. That's the sound I think. Oh, to our right. Next, our wrestlers are at practice this evening, although their practice I think is turning into a end of season party. But I did want to recognize Nate Duda who placed fourth, Madison Mangle who placed third at the end of their season, and Brandon Hoover and Addison Keane who have placed first and second. Addison advanced to the PGW State Wrestling Tournament in Pittsburgh, which would have been on the 14th and 15th. I'm not sure if that's still go or not. And Brandon also advanced to the state level and he used to wrestle on the 14th and 15th. So we're very proud of our state wrestlers. We also have two students. We also have two students Bailey and Andrew who placed and are moving on to, they would have moved on, they have canceled the swimming events for them, but they would have been representing themselves, their families in our school at Penn State on March 22nd. They made it to that level for their YMCA swimming. So we're also very proud of them and their accomplishments. Finally, I want to introduce a new program that we have here at Cambridge Elementary that was started by our sixth grade ELA teacher, Mrs. Henry. But I think they're doing a pretty good job of introducing themselves, so I'm going to stop and bring you on up. I'm also thrilled that Mrs. Patrick from St. Ertan High School is here tonight because she was part of our motivation to get this started and I know Mrs. Henry has used her as a sounding board, so I'll let you guys have a nice laugh.
Hi, I'm Emilio Harrison and we are here to talk about our new school newspaper that we started in December. It all started with our writing teacher, Mrs. Henry, who wanted to create a new challenging and creative opportunity for us. And when we first started, she just pulled us out to the hallway and told us to come up with names that we thought would be nice for our newspaper. And the first thing we started doing was just finding names, assigning topics that would work for different staff members, finding trending news and events to start writing. And then we actually started writing.
Hi, I'm Noah Holland and this is how everything gets together. And it usually takes a few days to a week to get everything done. And it takes, first it takes about a few days to brainstorm or go on. If you do that, we get on our iPads, type it, and we need to interview the people that we need to get the information. Unless we're done typing it on Google Docs, we share with Mrs. Henry. And for my first article, I even got to use the new classroom phones to get the information.
Hi, I'm Candice Zer and so the best part about writing a newspaper is you can collaborate with each other and we also get to go out of class to get interviews and so we get to do our duties. And we even have running dress classes and we all work as a team and Mrs. Henry bought us a pizza. That's how I got them here.
Hi, my name is Goldan Feltonberger and the way we come up with our ideas is we ask people what they want to see in our school newspaper and we sometimes brainstorm different ideas. And we take suggestions from teachers and the principal. We also have to search around the school for different occurring events that happen. And if any of you guys want to see something in our school newspaper, contact the teacher, Mrs. Henry, and there's his email.
Hi, I'm Brittany Notts and some of the things that we've learned is how to take pictures to improve the looks of our articles and how to get different quotes from different people and how to add them into the articles. We also learned the importance of editing and reading over more than once. Also persevering in the art bucket when it's done, knowing that there's always some improvements that you can add into it and also how to organize it as an article.
So to someone else, we all feel proud about when people compliment us for our work because we put in our hardest effort to do this all and knowing that we have this privilege to be able to because we have this privilege to do this in our work and print. You guys have any questions?
That's all we have for you tonight. I do want to say though, out of the 23 years that I've been here, this has been a really exciting year. We are moving in great directions here at Cambridge Springs and I think in our district as a whole. Some of the things that have been presented, I mean coding, robots, using their iPad daily, fifth and sixth grade students considering themselves because they are journalists that are making reporting, interviewing, greeting guests, showcasing what's going on in our building. Really exciting things are happening. It's been a great year at Pencrest. Thank you very much for all of the time and effort that you put in to make that happen. Very proud to be working here.
Thank you, Ms. Stevens. That was some great stuff to see beyond the classroom with the kids. Definitely learning life skills, enjoying school, great things. And I know we're seeing a lot more in classrooms from the teachers who weren't able to be here today.
Some of my students are elementary, so they're going to get up and leave if you could just give them two minutes.
We'll take a little break, let you guys get home, get some rest, enjoy your day off tomorrow.
Thank you so much to my family who brought everybody. I appreciate it.
Hey, thanks to student delegation representatives of Cambridge Springs.
Good evening, I'm Brenna McRite, I'm the staff writer.
Cambridge Springs. You can go first. That's fine. It's St. Ertan here.
Good evening, I'm Brenna McRite, I'm the staff writer for the Panther Press. I'd like to bring you up to speed on a few things from our school. So Senior Oliver Smith qualified for the PMEA All-State Music Festival to be held at the Calahari Resort in the Poconos, April 24th through 27th. He placed second chair base one out of 20 singers. Senior Kay Kaiser won a silver medal at the PIAA State Wrestling Finals on March 7th. This is his second consecutive PIAA silver medal. The Pencrest bowling team advanced to the High School State Team Bowling Finals that will be held this Saturday in Pittsburgh. This is the first time in Venkro High School bowling history that one of its teams has advanced to the state finals. Senior Nick Archoke also advanced to the High School State Individual Bowling Finals to be held at the same time and location. Today was the last day for two SHS staff members, Mrs. Sandra Hunter and Mrs. Kim Martin. Mrs. Hunter has been transferred to Cambridge Springs High School and Kim Martin will be at Central Office. We wish them well and thank them for their service to our school. Sophomore Brittany Howe qualified for the YMCA National Swimming Championship in the 200 freestyle relay. Although the event has been canceled due to coronavirus concerns, it is an honor to qualify. Today, the Spanish club traveled to Pittsburgh to experience various aspects of Spanish culture. And finally, Panther Press editor-in-chief Sam Schellenberger and staff writer Brenna McRite have been awarded second place in the state for Public Service Enterprise Package from the Pennsylvania News Media Association for their coverage of the Pencrest School Board election. The next issue of the Panther Press will be released on March 20th. Thank you for your time. We look forward to updating you next month.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Now we have Cambridge.
As well, up to you guys on athletics and academics. Our both our boys and girls basketball teams qualified for states and unfortunately we lost both games, but our girls finished 18 and 7 and the boys finished 21 and 5 with an undefeated region record. And we had a great time going down and playing against Portage, even though it was three hours away. And for teams, our 910 division got second place last Wednesday down in Edinburgh and our 1112 A-team got first place. So we're awaiting results on the essay and the design challenge to see if we qualify for nationals or not. And we're upcoming. Now we have softball, baseball, and volleyball. So those are all underway now. Let's see how we do.
Thank you.
May for one representative here this evening? Kay, EAEA representative and staff.
Hi, it's amazing to think all those three quarters of the way through the year. We'd like to congratulate all of the success of the winter sports teams, the women wrestlers at the state tournament, place and medal, basketball and wrestling and basketball. Our teams have been doing really great and the spring sports are starting to get underway. And for once, since I've moved here 27 years ago, it seems like you might be able to play baseball outside. And with, you know, the ever-changing news and what's occurring with the coronavirus, I would like to recognize our sports staff, which are tasked to keeping our buildings clean and our students safe. And I know that they're working extra hard at making our, you know, making our environment safe for our kids to come to school every day. So let's hope that we stay safe here in our nice little area of Northwest Pennsylvania and, you know, through the spring and the end of the school year, we'll be here before we know.
Thank you. Registered citizen column, we have Miss Stacy Hetrick.
Hello, I'm addressing you as a journalism advisor and a citizen and I would just want to draw your attention to the handout that I gave you. So we found out last week that the students have taken second place in the state for Public Service Enterprise Package from the PA News Media Association. These are the most prestigious journalism awards in the state of Pennsylvania and to be recognized at that level is a great, great, it's just a great accomplishment for the kids. Organizing the school board candidate forum, they had never done anything like that and I think they came together and did a really professional job. The article about it will be in the Meadville Tribune tomorrow and the list that I've given you shows you all of the schools from across the state that were winners. We did research in journalism class the other day about those schools and a lot of them are, there's no bracketing in high school journalism, let's just put it that way. Public, private, large, small, all are in the same pool. So I want to congratulate the staff of the Panther Press. I'd also just like to say what a thrill from a personal perspective to see another publication launch and we look forward to FaceTiming with them and talking about our journalism concerns and how hard it is, you know, how hard you work to get the story right. So thank you very much, school board members, for supporting press freedom. The column that Brennan wrote, Brennan is part of that award-winning coverage, really focused on the comments at the candidate forum about press freedom and we thank you for your support of that. So we appreciate that and if you have any questions, feel free to ask. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Hetrick. Before we jump into the rest of the agenda, I'd just like to make a brief comment. As we know, the country and the world is dealing with COVID-19 illnesses and virus, coronavirus going around. Just to give a little bit of an update for the public, Dr. Glasspool and the rest of the administration, we have been frequently in contact with county health officials, education officials within the county, as well as statewide. All information that we are receiving is being posted to the Pencrest website. We have created a coronavirus information website that contains links for the CDC, PA Department of Health, where information is being posted nationally and locally. You can get there by going to our district webpage, going to the bottom and there's an icon there to click to get to that information. We are also utilizing our school messenger phone service and texting abilities to provide information to families as information becomes available. As of right now, there are no recommendations from the Pennsylvania Departments of Health or Education to close schools. There is a statewide conference call for superintendents tomorrow morning and with the Pennsylvania Department of Education where more information is going to be shared. As a district, we have countywide meetings set up for Monday as well to speak with the other county superintendents and health officials and emergency management officials within the county to address the information that we're going to be provided. As you've heard, I'm sure many people have heard, various large group organizations and large group gatherings have been canceled across the state and across the country based on their needs and the information they're being provided and recommendations from CDC and their Departments of Health. There have been multiple events canceled for our students across the district. One just came in before the meeting started. Our Cambridge Springs softball was supposed to, there was a tournament scheduled for being, I believe, Warren, Ohio tomorrow. That has been decided to have been postponed and canceled, so our students will not be traveling to that tomorrow. As more things come along and information being passed along through coaches and through the buildings. We will continue to evaluate our plans and our next steps as information provided to us on a daily basis and as information and recommendations are provided to us, those we've presented to the community at large through our website and our messaging systems. The one thing that we do ask is what the CDC has been asking all along, that the community in general follows all the recommendations that CDC has been providing and the basic hygiene and hand washing, recommendations to stop the spread of any type of communicable disease such as the flu and coronavirus. So continue, everybody needs to continue down that pathway. We do ask that the community continues to be patient as information is passed along. We understand, you know, the severity of an international pandemic and we're working to make the best decisions for our community and for our students with as little disruption and additional strain placed on families. Like I said, further information will be provided in the coming days. We are updating the school board via email as we get the information as well so that we can make the proper decisions. So just wanted to present that information on behalf of Dr. Glasspool so that folks are aware to continue to check the websites and continue to look for more information to be provided in the very, very short future, coming days. Next on into the agenda, Education Committee, Mr. Brooks, chairman. Sorry, I got ahead of myself. Athletic committee, first time, first mistake. Athletic committee, Mr. Gulick, chairman, apologize, Mr. Gulick.
No problem.
First item, recommend approval to employ Jim Mulligan as an assistant softball coach for St. Ertan Junior Senior High School, effective 1920 school year. Salary level one, in accordance with Article 19 of the negotiated contract.
On behalf of the committee, submerge. Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
Extra compensatory position, recommend approval to employ Jack McFadden as a scorekeeper for a baseball program, Maplewood Junior Senior High School.
On behalf of the committee, submerge. Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
Athletic travel, recommend approval of the student athletic travel Athletic travel, recommend approval of the student athletic travel as listed.
I am not in favor of any student travel, so as the committee chairman, I will allow one of my colleagues to make that motion if they so choose.
On behalf of the committees, so moved.
Second. Discussion?
Well, no, I, yeah, I don't, I don't think in light of everything that's going on that student travel is a primary necessity. I realize the one trip is April 22nd, but we will have another meeting by then, and if things change, then I'm sure that could be approved at a later date. But at this time this evening, I'm not prepared to approve any student travel.
All right, roll call.
Mr. Brooks?
Yes.
Mr. Brown? Mrs. Davis?
No.
Mr. DeFrancesco?
No.
Mr. Jarrett?
Yes.
Mr. Golick?
No.
Mr. Johnson?
No.
Mr. Lynch?
No.
Mr. Valesky?
No.
Does not pass.
Aye.
Okay, moving on, Education Committee, Mr. Brooks, Chairman. Recommend approval of the 2020-2021 tentative school calendar as attached.
On behalf of the committee, so moved.
Second. Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
Affiliation agreement, recommend approval of affiliation agreement between Associates in Counseling and Child Guidance and Penncrest School District as attached.
On behalf of the committee, so moved.
Second. Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
Cooperative agreement with CHAPS, recommend approval of the cooperative agreement between Crawford County Mental Health Awareness Program, otherwise known as CHAPS, and Penncrest School District as attached.
On behalf of the committee, so moved.
Second. Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
Reed 180, recommend approval of the purchase of Reed 180 Universal as attached.
On behalf of the committee, so moved.
Second. Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
Student travel, recommend approval of the student travel as listed.
On behalf of the committee, so moved.
I would just reiterate what I just said.
Is that a second?
We don't, we don't have a second.
Oh, okay.
Second, I'm sorry.
Second.
Second.
Okay. Sorry, Mr. President. I'll just reiterate what I said earlier. I don't think at this time student travel is wise or necessary, so why would we vote it now?
I'd just like to add the reason that I think that I voted in the affirmative is as a school board, we should follow directives of the experts, which could be the Department of Health, the Department of State, and not present ourselves as experts and know more or less than they do. Oftentimes, there's unintended consequences for if we vote to cancel things. That can have more consequences that we're unaware of, since we're not experts on it. Thank you.
I know you didn't mean that as an insult, but I'm not pretending to be an expert. I'm erring on the side of caution, which I think is wise at this point. But that's only my personal opinion, and I understand other opinions and respect them, so.
Can you approve one and not the other? Because one's in Indiana, the other one's out in Pocono, so that's pretty far east where, you know, it's.
You could ask for them to be split for the vote if you choose to.
Well, the other thing, the one's at the end of April, just like the athletic travel. That's why I was hesitant. The one's in the end of April. Who knows what position we're going to be in the end of April. The one that's two weeks out, that makes me worry.
You could vote on one at a time. Is that your motion?
Indiana University, yeah. But they're gonna, or Indiana P A, yeah. It doesn't matter where it's at, but the I U P will be canceled, I guarantee you that.
Do we want to split it into two different?
Is that a motion, sir?
Yeah.
Is there a second?
To cancel the prior motion?
That would, yeah, we doubt the, that would, basically, it would be an amendment to prior motion to split the vote.
But am I wrong in saying that we could, if it didn't pass tonight, that we could approve it at the April meeting and then choose to send it?
We could, but what you're forgetting about some of this stuff is, I mean, it may be the end of April, but there are registrations and stuff that have to be done. And if we're gonna say, yeah, we'll decide some other time, they're gonna miss their registration time, and so they can't go even if we decide we're gonna send them.
Makes sense. So on the flip side, if we did approve it tonight, we could, we could rescind it in April. Does anyone?
There's a motion pending later on in the proceeding.
We can do whatever we want.
And we might be, we might be able to use that authority at a later point in time.
Yeah, remember what we talked about. Yeah, nobody knows what's gonna happen by the end of April. Well, we don't know what's gonna happen, though. Right. So that's, that's a valid point. That's a valid point.
So we have two motions to vote on. The first one being the recommendation of the approval of the ban to travel to, see, all bans travel to reach a ban of I U P on March 25th to March 27th. That would be the first motion. And I think we probably need to roll call.
Just a minute, I'm very confused.
It means we're gonna have a motion.
This is gonna be 6E1.
Sure.
And we're still going with Jeff Brooks and Tim Brown is the?
Tim Brown made the motion to separate the votes, so it would be Tim Brown.
Okay, okay, Ted, that's what I need help with. I don't have.
So we, he made the motion. We need a second on.
Okay, so this is gonna be Tim Brown.
And Jeff Brooks second.
Jeff Brooks second. 6E1.
Yeah.
Got it. Okay, Mr. Brooks?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
This is on.
Approving 6E1, first one, I U P trip.
The I U P trip.
The I U P trip. There, this is, this is, uh, yeah.
Mrs. Davis?
I don't know.
Mr. DeFrancesco?
No.
Mr. Jarrett?
Yes.
Mr. Golick?
No.
Mr. Johnston?
No.
Mr. Lynch?
Yes.
Mr. Valesky?
Yes.
We have five yeses.
Motion passes.
And a second motion would be the course to travel to P A, the all-state course of Pocono Mountains in April 22nd to 25th.
Removed by Tim and seconded by me.
Still? Okay. Okay, Mr. Brooks?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mrs. Davis?
I didn't hear.
Mr. DeFrancesco?
Yes, I didn't hear you.
Mr. Jarrett?
Yes.
Mr. Golick?
Yes.
Mr. Johnston?
Yes.
Mr. Lynch?
Yes.
Mr. Valesky?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Item F, March 2020 Penncrest schedule. Recommend approval of a Penncrest diploma for a student who complies with graduation requirements through an intermediate Unit 5 program.
On behalf of the committee, so moved.
Second. Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
You could do it now.
I'd like to make the motion to delegate authority to the superintendent to postpone, cancel, or reschedule any pending student travel, notwithstanding prior approval by the Board of Directors.
Second.
We have a second?
Yeah.
Bob's second.
Bob and Bob.
Johnson. Johnson.
Okay, is this a roll call?
Sure.
Roll call?
Give you practice.
This is the, this is still part of curriculum, right?
Yes.
It's, yes. All right. Mr. Brooks?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mrs. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. DeFrancesco?
Yes.
Mr. Jarrett?
Yes.
Mr. Golick?
Yes.
Mr. Johnston?
Yes.
Mr. Lynch?
Yes.
Mr. Valesky?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Up next, Facilities and Transportation Committee, Mr. Johnson, Chairman. The first item is a potential Guaranteed Energy Savings Act. This is gonna be a continued agenda item throughout the near future until we have a, then complete the audit. So up for discussion, or in current discussion.
Any discussions?
In motion?
No, it's, it's not.
It's just a discussion.
We're gonna keep it on the agenda up until they come back, just in case something comes up, somebody has to play.
I thought we were gonna be on it.
That's the next one.
Was their presentation, is it on the district website? The presentation has been put up on the district website. All those presentations from the work session, posted to the front page of the district website.
Thank you.
Okay, no discussion at this point. So next item is to recommend approval of the letter of agreement with the Corps of Company for investment grade audit.
Have the committee make that recommendation. Second.
Any discussion on that?
Yep.
She got me.
Oh, as, as for discussion, any discussion?
Is there discussion?
Oh.
All right.
Red or the?
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
2020-2021 transportation procedural change, recommend approval of the transportation procedure changes as listed and attached, effective for the 2020-2021 school year.
On behalf of the committee, make that recommendation. Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
I would just like to thank our facilities director, Dave Dixon, for the hard work he put in on this. All this information will be posted to the website, and will be presented and shared with the community going forward. Next item, recommend approval of the proposals from Dyson Haumey and Randolph Architectural for Engineering and Design Services for the maintenance garage as attached.
On behalf of the committee, make that recommendation. Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
Roof replacement bids for M E S and M H S, recommend approval to award the bid for roof replacement to Triangle Roofing at Maplewood Elementary School, base bid two, at a cost of $232,760. And Maplewood Junior Senior High School, base bid three, at a cost of $105,350.
On behalf of the committee, make that recommendation. Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
Roof replacement materials, bid for M E S, recommend approval to award a bid for roof replacement materials for Maplewood Elementary School and Maplewood Junior Senior High School to Garland D B S at a cost of $228,968.19.
On behalf of the committee, make that recommendation. Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
Purchase of vans, recommend approval to purchase three vans from Bob Ferrando for it as attached.
On behalf of the committee, make that recommendation. Second.
Any discussion? Other than it's about time? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
Parent-provided transportation agreement, recommend approval of parent-provided transportation agreement for student A.
On behalf of the committee, make that recommendation. Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
Finance Committee, Mr. Brown, Chairman. 2020-21 general fund budget, again, this is gonna be an ongoing discussion item at each of our public meetings. So 2021 general fund budget, any open discussion?
This is on the website as well?
Yes.
When are we gonna have the public meeting for the budget? For the future budget?
We're planning to do that for the next work session.
In April?
Yes.
Okay, Treasurer's Report, recommend approval of the Treasurer's report as attached.
On behalf of the committee, so moved.
Second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
Disbursements, recommend approval of the disbursements as attached.
On behalf of the committee, so moved.
Second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
Crawford County Career Tech Center budget. Oh, I'm sorry. Recommend approval of the 2021 Crawford County Career Tech Center budget in the amount of $4,822,967 for the operating budget and $789,875 for debt service budget. Penncrest estimated share is $1,709,233, and respectively $240,122.
On behalf of the committee, so moved.
Second. Any discussion?
Just wanna make sure the public knows that what the cost is for our own students that go to, to the career center. And I think it's a very good investment, because that's the future for these kids, it will be secure.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
I U 5 2021 budget, recommend approval of the 2020-2021 Northwest Tri-County Intermediate Unit 5 budget in the amount of $61,886,300, and further approve the district's contribution to the general operating fund 10, and school improvement service fund 20 budgets for the 2020-2021 fiscal year in the amount of $53,737.59.
On behalf of the committee, so moved.
Second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
Land service agreement, recommend approval of the wide-area network service agreement between Penncrest School District and Northwest Tri-County Intermediate Unit 5, effective July 1, 2020 through June 30, 2025, as attached.
On behalf of the committee, so moved.
Second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
We do an agenda for the Personnel Committee. Personnel Committee, Mr. Brooks, chairperson. Recommend approval of items A through H of the Personnel Gen.
On behalf of the committee, so moved.
Second. Any discussion?
So you, um, what was wondering, like, we had, probably, you asked a year ago.
I would say probably not, looking at the list.
Superintendent's office hasn't been looking at that much closely since the one time that happened.
There's nobody, it's nothing.
Before Dinah puts it on the agenda, they need to work with Brian to make sure there's nothing outstanding.
Any other discussion, good questions?
Reminder.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
Policy Committee, Mr. DeFrancesco, Chairman. Item A, approval of policies, recommend approval of the following policies as listed and attached.
On behalf of the committee, so moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
Item B is informational, first readings of the policies as listed and attached. School Safety Committee, Mr. Brown, Chairman. Recommend approval to administer the P A school climate survey to elementary grades five and six, middle grade seven and eight, and high school grades nine through 12, and offer the P A school climate survey to parents, guardians, staff, and community members as attached.
On behalf of the committee, so moved.
Second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Opposed? Motion passes.
I think the information will be put together relating to that and disseminated to the community as well. On to Crawford, any Crawford County Career and Tech Center, Mr. Robert Johnson, any permission?
Yeah, we had a couple things. There was a donor, and I believe they gave us the information that made a sizable donation to the Career Tech Center for advertising and marketing for the Career Center. John Deard donated a Cummins Diesel motor to the VOT Tech. We're fairly expensive motor.
Very expensive motor.
Thousands of dollars. They're still working on the shortage for first responders. Skills USA competition, they had a number of them placed, and one young lady placed second in the welding. There's now a nursing co-op agreement between the Career Center and Clarion University. There's some shortages.
IU 5 report, Mr. Brooks?
Last meeting was pretty focused on the budget. They do a very comprehensive budget of 600 pages of each program listed with all the budget and all the personnel, and it's, it's a lot. They do a great job with that, and they've also been a great source of information on policy and updates on the virus and what's going on at the state level.
PSBA Legislative Report, Mr. Goulik?
This has nothing to do with our schools or students per se, but just today, PSBA has canceled all travel. They've canceled all face-to-face meetings. They're taking this virus seriously as everyone else is, and hopefully they're just, like I said before, erring on the side of caution, and things will be looking up soon, hopefully. But they're, like everyone else, they're being very cautious about it. Other than that, I have nothing from PSBA.
All right, any new business? Start over here with Jen, or the board member.
Good work in the week. I think mostly I just wanna thank our current administration for all the hard work. I know you are all working double time on top of what you're already having, keeping everybody informed and making decisions to do the best for the kids and for our community, so I thank you for that. I wish others were here to think, those little guys just made my night. It was a bright spot. We really worked the week, so it's nice to see all the progress it's been making in the district and looking forward to seeing things continue in the positive direction.
Yeah, I'd like to see the patriotic songs with the kids too, and the presentation. Is that four H for the pigs? Is that part of that? That was interesting. Good luck with the new paper here for Cambridge Springs. Sorry about the travel, make, you know, problems with this with the virus going on, but a lot of us wanna err on caution, but I don't wanna cut anybody off for money they put out also, so it's gonna be kind of a fluid decision between all of us yet. The coding and the robots that you guys are doing up here, I think that's good for the future, what we're all gonna be needing as we get older. And thanks for the papers, for the updates, Panther Press and such.
Yeah, just for the first graders, that was pretty cool seeing them. I love seeing them singing stuff. And then the pigs and stuff, that's pretty cool to see in the school and stuff that that's involved. And just for, with the travel and everything with coronavirus, just people stay clean and wash your hands, and there's not a lot we can do at this point, so.
I also wanna thank the first graders, they did an awesome job. And to Mrs. Henry for the, that came, the elementary newspaper. It's fantastic to see that happen, and Mrs. Hetrick, oh, there you are, back there. Thank you for helping guide everything along and all that you do, and you really go above and beyond all the time. Thank you, I appreciate it. The winter sports, the kids did awesome. It was great to hear all the successes they had. It was unfortunate, the loss that they had, but overall, I think they had a wonderful time, and hopefully they have a lot of memories to take with them later on in life. And for the support staff, thank you for all you do in cleaning the school, especially this time with the coronavirus, and I don't even like saying it anymore, I'm tired of hearing it, but I know you work tirelessly to keep our kids safe and keep them in school clean, so thank you.
I'd like to follow up to my suggesting of that we need to have civic classes for our students. When I wrote the Argon Tribune, I was not aware that in a year, in 2018, government will already sign an act that mandates that the, our students, in order to graduate, will have to learn about the government, the United States government. The superintendent assured the post committee that this course will be included in the 2020-2021 as required by Act 35. And the United States Constitution will be used to teach the course. And in fact, while I usually carry this with me all the time, just to remind myself what the United States is all about. As a matter of fact, there's no need to buy any books, because the, this year is available through the internet for free. And in fact, the superintendent already downloaded on his computer to be used in the future as a teaching guide. I also like to congratulate the Panther Press editor-in-chief, Saint Schellenberger, and staff writer Brennan McBride, who have been awarded second place in the State for Public Service Enterprise Package from the Pennsylvania News Media Association for the coverage of the Penn Crest School Board election. And I think a merit has to go to Mrs. Hetrick, because she's the leader and teaches those kids the right way and what the right way, and I appreciate your efforts, ma'am.
Yeah, I just wanna echo a couple things. Like Jen said, we really appreciate the administration stepping up through this difficult time, and I know it's very time-consuming. They have other things to do besides worry about a pandemic virus, but they're doing a great job. And what Mr. DeFrancesco said, Mrs. Hetrick and her Panther Press kids winning second in the state is fantastic. We congratulate them. Thank the first graders for singing, and the four H family with the pigs, very cute pigs. Pigs are very intelligent, too. Do you know them? And also the retirees, I wanna wish them well and congratulate them. Hopefully they'll have a nice, long retirement. And I guess finally, like I always say, congratulations to the winter sports teams, and good luck to the spring sports teams. Hopefully we can get our seasons in without any interruptions or problems. So thank you.
Thank you for hosting us here at Cambridge Springs. It's gonna be a tough act to follow with first graders singing followed by baby farm animals. I think that that kinda suckered us all in on that one. There's great things happening in our district in addition to the press awards. We're out competing other districts in regard to our SAT scores. There's a nice article in the paper about that. Our own Cyber Academy is saving us tons of money, and our teachers have really gone out of the way to limit the number of substitutes we're paying for, that we're saving money as taxpayers. So great job to everybody involved there. In addition, we talked about Cambridge Springs. Cambridge's Maplewood Girls Basketball Team both advanced to the state tournament, the Cambridge Boys did. And wrestling, our district had four state qualifiers, two returned home with medals. Congratulations to Kenny Kaiser for his second-place finish. He's committed to go into West Point after he graduates, so congratulations Kenny. And junior Joey King finished eighth for Maplewood at 220 pounds. And we had nine junior high wrestlers qualify for states with two medalists. Congratulations to Carter Beck, he got fourth place in the state. And there was another kid named Brooks who got sixth. Thank you to the support staff. Make sure you check the district website. All the presentations from the work session on Monday are up on there as far as the GISA and the budget and updates on the coronavirus. In regard to that, just make sure you're using trusted sources for information. We've got that up on our district website. Wash your hands, and if you're sick, don't get other people sick.
Don't touch your face.
And lastly, in regard to the civics class, I'm glad that those were brought up. I think our teachers are doing a great job already in teaching civics. I think it's good that it is an extra area of emphasis. But I know that my eighth graders are learning about the Constitution and the Articles of Confederation and the Federalist Papers, and there's a lot of civics already being taught in the class. I think it's important to know that our teachers are teaching that, and they're doing a great job. Thank you very much.
First, I'd like to thank Ms. Stevens for her hospitality, and I wanna thank the young folks for their presentations tonight. It was awesome. I'd like to congratulate them on their newspaper. And I'd like to thank Ms. Hetrick for her involvement, helping get that started, and also bringing your students to the point of getting that award. That's awesome. I'd like to congratulate our winter sports teams. I got to watch some of the playoff games. They did an awesome job. There's no shame. There's some great talent out there. I'd like to congratulate our retirees. Hopefully enjoy retirement like some of us already are. And I'd like to encourage everybody to stay clean, try and avoid this virus at all possible. Apologize for the student travel, but like Mr. Goulik said, we wanna err on the side of caution, just so we don't see that in our schools here.
I got nothing. I have nothing to add.
Nothing at all?
Announcements?
Yep, announcements. Board met prior to this meeting. An executive session for personnel, school safety, and real estate. And then the second announcement listed on the agenda is, will be a standing list of future committee meetings and dates on the agendas for the community to see those advertised.
Motion to adjourn. All in favor?
Yes. Aye.